Okay, there you go, Paul.
All right, so this is the Maynard zoning board of appeals. It's Monday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. And we're holding this meeting remote. And let me do a quick introduction here. I'm Paul Scheiner, the Chair of the zoning board. Paige?
Hi, everyone. I'm Paige Spiga, the Vice Chair of the ZBA.
John?
John Corville, member of the ZBA.
Brad?
Brad Schultz, alternate member.
And Brad will not be voting on his first case. Leslie?
Leslie Bryant, member of Sony Board of Appeals.
And Jerry, just joined.
Member of the zoning Board of Appeals.
All right, we also have Bill Nemser here from town, everybody knows him. And we have Brian, Town Council. So on the first case, I will read what we have on the agenda. It's a public hearing, Sixth Glendale Street, continued from August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Can ZBA consider the application submitted by Joanna Morales, two nineteen Bishop Drive, Framingham? Subject property, Sixth Glendale Street, Maynard is a pre-existing non-conforming structure located in the business district. The subject property's current use is an auto detailing shop. The applicant is proposing changing the use to auto repair because the structure on the prop subject property is non-conforming due to insufficient frontage and setbacks, a finding by the ZBA is required per the zoning bylaws that the proposed structural improvements are no more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure might be or currently is. The ZBA is charged for this application limited to modifications of the non-conforming structure as proposed by the applicant. The change of use, the proposed change of use, is not part of this finding that's in the forte of the planning board. So Joanna, I understand you are asking for a withdrawal of of the application, is that true?
Yes, we're asking to withdraw without penalty that when we spoke with the contractor, he said he needs a couple of months to come up with the plans to show you guys on how to make it work with like the sound barriers and placement of how the the equipment would affect the building. And I know that we've gone, we've been doing this since like April. And I don't wanna continue to ask for continuance until I can give you all the documents and visuals of how everything's gonna go before I try to proceed with getting a permit. I think it would be, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. I I was just commenting that it sounds like a reasonable plan that you're asking for to just postpone and withdrawn and re- refile.
Correct. And then, in the, in this time, we will go forward with the detail shop since that was already zoned there, just so we can have at least part of our business set up until we can figure out the repair shop. Excuse me. I'm not feeling well today. So yeah, we would like to just withdraw without any penalties on that and then go for the detail shop since it's already been zoned there, just so we can have at least some part of our business running, just because we're losing a lot of money and if we can't have at least something work to do, we're, because we're in a five-year contract for that building.
Right. So your letter also commented something about a rental agency? Is that what you're gonna pursue now or is that in the future as well?
That's in the future as well because that, the rental, the rental, I think has to do with the select board because it's dealing, I I'm not sure. I'm not sure if I'm getting that confused with like the dealership. But the rental car, I have to do more research on how to like proceed with that. But detail shop is our number one priority right now until we get the contractors' plans of how to get the repair shop.
Okay, Brian, did you want to comment on anything here? We're we're gonna propose a vote to accept her withdrawal without without prejudice? Do you want to make any comments?
Sure, let me offer a couple of things if I may, Mr. Chairman of the Board, and I hope everybody can hear me okay. My little microphone got crushed earlier today and it's on its last legs here. But so two comments, as you just mentioned, the appropriate motion would be to accept the withdrawal without prejudice, which means another application can be filed within two years. Once the applicant has has gotten a clearer picture of of what she wants to do and how she wants to do it. So that would be the appropriate motion. Normally, when a board accepts a request that an application be withdrawn, we don't really issue any kind of decision. But considering how much work you've put into this, I may make a recommendation that if it's the board's will and you're you're okay with me proceeding on this, that we maybe work with your building department and Mr. Nemser to just send a letter out to kind of memorialize, you know, the process here and the where we're at and the status quo. I've heard, you know, from the board and from your staff that the limited detailing work is allowed, just due to prior permits and approvals, but much of the other things that we've discussed requires zoning relief. A trip to the planning board, probably a trip back to this board. And so I think it may make sense to just blueprint that a little bit to help the applicant in her endeavors, but also to help the board. So if and when this does return to everybody, we kind of know how we got there. So if it's okay with the with you, Mr. Chairman and the board, I'd offer to do that and work with your staff to do that. And that would, as I said, kind of lay out, you know, sort of the baseline here of of what we're dealing with and what the future steps might be if the applicant comes back to pursue some of the things that she's just mentioned.
That would be very helpful because I know my memory isn't perfect anymore. You never know when this is gonna come back and you want to be ready for it. So I appreciate that offer. So I would entertain a motion to withdraw without prejudice. Anybody gonna make it for me? Leslie's. You're on.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the request to withdraw the
Application.
Oh, yeah, the application for the, the application at Sixth Glendale Street to open an auto beat, well, no, an auto repair shop.
Yeah, withdraw without prejudice.
Yes, withdraw without prejudice.
Thank you. Do I get a second?
Second.
Jerry's gonna second. Is there any comment from other board members at this time about this case? I'm not hearing any, okay? Paige, how do you vote?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes as well. So that's, that's been decided, Joanna. And we wish you well as you as you figure out and get your contractor to do what needs to be done.
Yes, thank you.
All right, next. Next item on our agenda is public hearing, also a continuance of the BP gas station, One Powder Mill Road, continued from eight twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, filed by business owner, Usik Chang, AKA Gio, One Powder Mill Road, Maynard. The subject property, One Powder Mill Road, existing BP gas station, downtown mixed-use overlay district with underlining, underlying zoning in the business district per section three-two-three and ten-two, the protective zoning bylaws, the application applicant, sorry, seeks a special permit approval to allow overnight storage of more than one commercial vehicle not to exceed twenty-five thousand GVW, AKA U-Haul facility at the subject property. And Gio, as we last talked, you were going to provide us with a map of where you were gonna park the trucks and how you're gonna camouflage parking the trucks.
Yes, sir.
You want to, want me to? Gio, do you have it in your computer? You want me to share the screen for you? Or do you prefer I run this, the PowerPoint for you?
Either way is fine, I mean.
All right, Leslie, I'll let you do it, then you can go at your own pace. Let's see. Okay. Okay, you should be able to do it now, Gio.
Me?
Yes, you should be able to run.
Sure. I have a screen recording warning from Google Chrome. Should I deny it?
Yeah, deny it, I guess. And if not, I can share on mine if it's
Is it shared?
Yeah, I can share, okay.
No, no, I'm asking you, is it shared from my screen or?
No, no, I don't see it yet. You should have the ability to do it though. Oh, maybe because you didn't hit, no.
Oh.
Let me try often and I'll let's try it on again, let's see. I turned it off and now, okay, now I just try it again. Now see if you can do it. I just reboot it. And if not, I'll just pull it up on mine. Because we're recording, it's probably asking if you wanted to.
That's why, yeah, I mean, it doesn't ask me again, like if the Chrome allow to record it or not.
So it's not, you're not, you're not able to share, you don't like?
Yeah, so Bill, I'm sorry, but can you?
Yep.
Okay.
This is where we need artificial intelligence to figure out what we mean.
One simple click on deny and then kind of ruin my
Okay, can everybody see that now?
Yes.
Okay. So Gio, you just told me when to click ahead.
Yes, so this is about the BP gas station in Maynard about fence to screen the U-Haul trucks. Bill, can you click next?
Okay.
So this is the current picture of the side with the Jiffy Lube on the Powder Mill Road side and the bottom one is Waltham Street side. So it's currently, current view is showing. Can you click next? So we researched it, other like Enterprise or EVs and CJ towing companies in Maynard. And the best bet is, you know, just using some fabrics so that doesn't really it doesn't really go out of norm, but still, you know, in the comfort zone with the people. So, but I mean, we, we, we're gonna screen like showing like this in the fabric one and or slat. Can you click next? So this is the little display for how it would look after screening the chain link fence. And then we're gonna provide some weed control from outside and inside too, so that we'll we'll do the weed control thing and mulch and then plant, it's a suggestion, but maybe definitely we're gonna go for the weed control. And then this side, the other side, this side is four feet high, the same. But the truck is not shown because to the ground level, it's like twenty feet down, so four feet is high enough to cover from this end.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
Gio, two questions, the, the, you said a four-foot, not a six-foot fence, correct?
This one's existing four-foot.
Okay, and then the second question I had, you said mulching and weed control on this side of the fence, on the outside of the fence?
Yes, yes, so that there's no overgrown plants through the sidewalk so that people can walk.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, that that was the thing I was cleared on last time, like this is, you know, the town wanted me to control over it. So I'm offering it. Good?
Next slide?
Yeah, next. Yep, next, please. Oh, you're going forward.
Oh, I'm at six, I'm at slide six.
Is it six? Yeah, can you click? Oh, so yeah, this is a little specification like, can you go back? Yep. No, the the descriptive one.
I'm sorry, do you want me to go?
Forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Six.
Yep, so, so this material, the fabric one will be used on both sides, Waltham and Jiffy Lube side. But if the ZBA wants to have six feet one, maybe we can do on the Jiffy Lube side on the limited lengths from the behind, not to block the operator's line of sight for incoming traffic on the street. But the purpose of this fabrication is to screen the U-Haul truck as required. Next one, please. The material I found was this, that's commonly used in AVs and Enterprise two. And the length of the screen will be this much, like from the back till the Jiffy Lube side. So whenever the truck is back in, it will be covered from the street. But when it backs out, after customer dropped it, then the operator will see through the cars coming in the Powder Mill Road, so there's no least amount of safety concerns when it, when the truck is backing out to the street. And the material I'm gonna use was Angel Star, one gouge, polyvinyl chloride chain link fabric roll can be purchased from the Home Depot.
You have a a green spool there, Gio. Is, are you looking at green or are you looking at white, a mother color?
Well, I'm suggesting to have a green, but if it's too boring, then we'll be mixed.
Sometimes boring is good.
Okay, yeah, I mean, BP matches with the green and green is green color, so I like green. But, you know, we're not we're, we're not thinking of something very unique things, but I mean, as the Mr. Chairman says, the boring is good, not just to be covered with the nature. Yeah, but this is the one I'm thinking to have it through the fence.
Okay.
Yeah, can you click next? Yep, this is the suggestion. I mean, you know, it happened to be white, but it will be green or the best color to calm down the tones and stuff like that. Yeah, click next, please. And this is the suggestion of how the trucks will be stored after hour. So the orange is the suggested storage of the trucks. And the light beige is just in case, for example, people return car during the operation hour, they can drop anywhere they want. And then and then the arrow, down arrow shows that's how usually our operator has to back out the truck. That's why there is, if you look at the fence, there is a green side and gray side. Gray is not covered area so that the operator while it backing out to Powder Mill Road, they can see through the cars coming from the Concord side to the western. But on the right side in the Waltham Street, that the gray area will make the operator be able to see through any incoming cars or turning to the right cars on the Waltham Street, so they they will see it, but it doesn't really stick out that much because that truck can drive to like turn left from inside. So it's kind of okay side there, but I mean, on the Jiffy Lube side, we have, it's very essential to have this open space to see the cars or sometimes there's pedestrians with people running around, so that we need to be able to see it or hear it from them. So this is the, the, the map of how we're gonna store the trucks.
How many trucks?
Sorry.
How many trucks are you looking at? I see the dark orange and then I see some yellow ones, which are they all trucks? What's the difference?
Oh, the yellow truck during the daytime, when, while in the like operation time for the business, they can come and wait, but I mean, the after closing, the maximum number of ten trucks will be stored like that.
The dark orange?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the little, the black line shows like it could be replaced with the trailers. But but we don't really have any trailer now, but sometimes one person bring in trailer and then it goes out the next day, but there's a possibility, so I just kind of marked it as it could be replaced with the trailer too.
If if somebody brings the eleventh truck in, what happens?
They can't. No person is allowed, and that's a trespass. Because from the beginning of the business, the U-Haul management had our site as twenty-four-seven self-check-in checkout site, that's why it happened before, but since we demanded them, no, no parking, have no return after operation hour at eight PM, then it never happened since then.
That's good to know, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So anyone who brings in here, it happened once, then they had to bring the truck back to their home because they couldn't complete the return. Still, it's their responsibility to have it.
All right, so the no after hour is important. That's different from what we were talking last night.
There was a, there was a change. I just made it clear with our operators. Never happened and they said, no. Then I figured out why, because it was twenty-four-seven self-pickup available site, so that was the beginning of last year. And then after that, I told you all that, no. It's like, it's manpowered here and then no after business hour return. So they didn't allow it. They don't, they don't let the customers complete the return process without us.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Earlier on in your presentation, you mentioned you'd looked at some of the other facilities in town like Jimmy's and so on.
Yes.
I thought they had a stockade fence separating them from the neighbors. Not a chain link, isn't that right?
AVS has training fence with the fabrics.
Do they? Okay. Does anybody else on the board have questions of Gio? Leslie?
Sorry.
Yeah.
My radar went off when he mentioned weed control. So I wanted to be sure that any weed control is like cutting it or pulling it, but not using anything like Roundup because well, I, you know, they're so close to the river that I don't think that they should be allowed to use any sort of a chemical herbicide. So I just like to stipulate that no
No control weeds?
No chemical control of weeds.
So Gio, what were you thinking on for weed control?
Well, we like to have very eco-friendly business. But and then that should be our business decision instead of going into the condition to the special permit. And those weed control chemicals, so long as it's not banned or illegal to use, then I don't want to put those kind of terms in the condition in consideration of the special permit, but I am, what Leslie just mentioned, we cut it, we pull it, we do everything, we try to avoid using chemical spray. So so if that's something the board could consider, then it would be great.
Well, I
Have you thought about, sorry, Leslie, have you, have you thought about using a cloth cover on the ground to inhibit weed growth?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, you know, just once a year, like we try to weed back all the plants need, but next year we'll grow back, but I mean, after that, we kind of cut it, everything. So it's been just like that, but since the, the trees or those kind of plants, you know, just weaving into the fences was, I wasn't sure about because I saw the town one, one, once they did it, so I kind of waited, but last meeting cleared up. They came to every year, so now I told my people that, hey, we're gonna do it. Then they, they were afraid of like, can we cut something on the public or town land? And I said, that's what the board told me.
Okay, Leslie, go ahead. I mean, I interrupted you, I'm sorry.
Um. Well, I think that, for example, when there are new developments in town that the Conservation Commission, for example, can stipulate that that a developer you know, that, that the residents couldn't use herbicides, I'm not sure that they ever actually do say that, but I know that when people have been using herbicides on public sidewalks and I've reported it to the DPW, I was told that they were not supposed to be doing that because that's public property and I, I think it's a slippery slope. And anyways, it is a literal slippery slope because it's absolutely up land of the river, which is very close. And I really would object to any kind of a chemical spray like Roundup or anything being used on that property.
Okay. Jerry, any comments, questions?
Yeah, I was just gonna raise my hand. There are pet-friendly and eco-safe weed and grass killers sprays that you can use and buy. You know, just to, I mean, I don't disagree with what Leslie's saying, but you know, I, there are products out there that are safe to use. I would imagine that an owner could use them. But that's my two cents on that one.
Okay. John?
No, I was just thinking that if you use something severe, he's just gonna kill everything on the other side too, so he probably, he probably need his best interest not to use something too, too dangerous, but like Jerry said, there's stuff that's like, it's particular for just dandelions and stuff like that, that's not too, too bad.
Okay. Paige, any questions, comments?
No, I was just looking at some of the criteria we need to address, and one of them is also provide a significant improvement to the water quality of the stormwater runoff reaching the river. They only need to meet one of the six criteria, that's one. One of the six, I think right now that they're trying to meet the other one by providing the fencing, but that could come into play depending on what mitigation commitments are made today.
All right.
Any?
Thanks, Brad. Did you have anything to add, question?
No, I have no questions.
Excellent. So.
May I ask a couple of questions, Mr. Chair?
Let me think about it. Okay.
Thank you. Gio?
Um, Gio, I have a question about the um, two questions, um. Right here, we're talking about on the Jiffy Loop side.
Yes.
Now, the currently there's a fence here that does have some visibility, but um, I, I, I'm concerned if the board author, like this, where we have the fabric halfway. And then we have
Open.
If that kind of defeats the purpose, I'm not sure if it does, but I, I, I would, that's my first question. And would we, um, while I understand that, you know, there's an issue of sightline on both of these fences. Um, I'm not sure that, that, that is, is uh, something that concerned my D P W on our walk out there and particularly on the Waltham Street side where we had uh, we have a stoplight anyway. Now, I, I, and there's a board, I'm not speaking for the board, this is just for me and kind of uh, questions. But I, I'm just concerned if we're gonna go to, particularly if we're gonna go to, if the board wants to go to a four foot rather than a six foot fence. It, it might look kind of, I'm not sure how it would look as good as it could if uh, the, if the fence extended down and um, this one, let's see, we're talking about stopping it. Right now it goes almost to the street, to uh, to sixty-two. Right? And you're talking about stopping, uh, taking out what's there and putting this and uh, stopping how far before the street compared to where it is now, the intersection.
Bill, could you uh, do a, a street view off the computer?
Yeah.
At Waltham Street side?
Yeah, give me a second here. You guys, now, just talk and I'll get it going. Let's see.
So what, what you were showing in those images, Gio, that was equivalent of a four foot fence? Or with?
Yeah, for the height purposes, I, I assumed the, the existing fence.
Okay.
On the Waltham side, even if it's four feet, still, my station is way below the level of the slope, so, yeah, the truck top doesn't really peeking through it. So uh, it's totally covered from that side.
And on the uh, Jiffy Loop side, where you colored it in?
Yes.
That's also about four feet? That seems a little shorter, isn't it? Or is that still a four foot there?
That's existing four foot.
Okay. But now a pedestrian could look in and, and see all your trucks back there.
So, but I mean, that means, that means we have eye contact means I know where you are. So the truck itself, when I backed up, the truck was very um, uh, very, like, very cautious, because the truck is big and the bus is sticking out to the street. So, but I mean, once I rolled down the window and then could hear and see the car coming in and out on both sides. That was very um, like um, that was very good uh, safety measure for me when I rearranged the cars. So, but I mean, for the beautification and complete screen, that means you're gonna block the line of sight of the operator too, and then they had to assume no cars coming, no persons coming, then that will seriously increase the risk of getting um, the accident.
I, I, yeah, I, I understand that. What I'm, what I'm looking at here is the goal, and the goal is to not have all those trucks easily visible.
Right, so from this Waltham Street, you could go all the way down to this tree. You see those two trees?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll go stop right there.
Okay. Here, like?
No, the other one. That tree, get right there.
Yeah, and your truck, you're parking the trucks behind the attendant booth, so that's way in the back still, so your line of sight is interrupted, which is what you're trying to do.
But this side is okay, because the, this side truck backs out, but without risking to stick out on the street, they can make a left turn from inside.
If, if traffic clears, that's a hard left to do coming out on the powder mill.
Yeah, but I mean, on the JP Loop side, that was a hard one, because if the customer parks head in, then they have to pull out, unless there is no um, customers like this, then they can pull to the right and make a turn there. Um, but usually there's uh, cars when customer return truck. So that's why we like to have uh, much of space, like uh, open space there, but this Waltham Street one, we can cover up to this tree, or it could go all the way down too.
So, on, on this side, I, I can see where it could go down further, not a big deal. On the other side, and looking through this picture to the fence on the other side.
Mm, Jiffy Loop?
Yeah. That, that looks to me like your truck is going to be sitting higher than the four foot fence, so the driver should be able to see over the fence.
On, on the Jiffy Loop side, Paul?
Yes, yes.
You want me to go over there?
No, like, just leave it the way it is, because it's got a good overall view, I thought. You, you can drive it around if you want, but I, I thought it was okay.
Making myself too sick.
So, if you went to a six foot fence on the Jiffy Loop side, but only in the back half, where you showed it.
Mm-hmm.
Is that okay with you for, you know, the visibility issues? Cause that to me is more privacy on the, cause that's all the same level there. And, and you're trying to camouflage the trucks and the six foot fence will do a better job from pedestrian point of view.
Yeah, if that's something board really wants to vote for it, then I have no other option other than accept it.
Okay. So.
But seriously, you know, we have to use our sensory here, because people walks, usually walks down alone with the fence. After they park the car in the Jiffy Loop in the backyard. And then I see sometimes a group of people, parents with kids, they running to the store. So I see a lot of, sometimes some bicycle kids. So um, I know I get the point, but I don't want to be blamed for, or yelled at like, you know, just a lot of people will be yelling at, or just, you know, just hitting the trucks like, uh. So I mean, I hear the point, but I want you to also consider about um, just one in million time, like one in a million, if the kids just running and we couldn't hear it, see it, then if something happens, then it would be very tragic.
I understand. On, on the Jiffy Loop side, I, I'm not asking about putting more fence. I'm just asking where you have marked it to make it higher.
Like a two feet extension?
Yeah, make it to six foot where you had marked it before on the, on the presentation.
I, I think I can do that.
Okay, and on what we're seeing in the foreground here with these very artistic tree stumps. You were talking about just taking it from the right-hand tree stump to the right.
All the way back.
So you're talking about roughly in between, like if we use the, in between the gas pumps would be a good way to?
Gas pumps?
Yeah, you see a pump here, a pump here.
Yeah.
You're right in between them too. So we, this is roughly where the fence would end. What would, would there be something here?
There, I mean, if it's cut like this, then usually that should be still issued to the pedestrians?
Well, no, but if you're, if you're proposing the fence is only gonna go to here, yeah?
Right, screening, the screening, not the, the screening part.
Screening, not, not there, but you're gonna, these trees are okay, they're, they're growing leaves and stuff like that, so um, not in the middle, but maybe to stop right at the tree so that I can cut the tree growing to the fabric. But I can let the tree grow um, to the street side, but I'll probably cut from the sidewalk, so that it doesn't really poke people.
But you would leave the, the chain link that, from here to the stoplight corner? Beyond the fire hydrant, you would leave those chain links there?
Then um, do you want me to put fabric too?
Well, that's, no, no, I, I'm just asking what your thoughts are. Were you gonna leave the open?
Yeah, that, that's my original plan to have this, so that the people know if there is any cars coming from there, because um, sometimes some cars make a fake flip turn from there using this gas station, like you see those two, two cars, three cars, from that, their side, they just fly into this station and make a turn. So I just want the people aware of the cars doing some weird stuff.
Okay, but, yeah, but my, my question was, I thought pretty, pretty simple here. You're gonna leave the chain link regardless.
Without the screen.
Without screen, yeah, so that people can see it, the cars.
But you'll leave the chain link so they don't jump over the cliff?
Well, there's no cliff.
Oh, yeah, 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 for safety issue, when they get slipped and they have, they have to have something to hold on.
Well, this is, this is not really, the house, is it steep here, Gio? It's very?
Oh, it's flattening out.
There, it's kind of steep, more water stays, water just slides down. But maybe this side, this, where the electric pole is, that's a little, that's flat, but it will grow.
I, I'm wondering, Mr. Chair and Board, if, okay, so we've got like probably a, a two and a half foot, yeah, I see it, drop there.
Yeah, it's quite a bit. When it snows, then people, the kids will like to sled down, but.
Here?
No, I'm just making some generated story.
I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering from, from an aesthetic, I, I, I'm asking the board from aesthetics. If we have a, the fence stopping here roughly, right by the second tree, which is about, let's say, uh, where is it? Here?
Yeah.
Um. Are we okay? Or maybe this would be where, Leslie, where your Virginia creep? Well, then you're covering it again though.
Right.
Uh, the, remember the goal, Bill, is to camouflage the orange trucks parked behind the building.
Yeah, and produce, improve the experience for there, but, okay, I just bring it, I'm just curious, just asking some questions, okay?
And so I, I'm, you know, leaning in favor of this, as long as it's not that gray white color, but if it's you know, maybe the green of your signs would be something that I, that I would not have a problem with. Going as far forward as you say, on the Jiffy Loop side, I would wonder about a six foot instead of four foot, because you're all at the same grade as you're looking past there. But on the hillside, I don't know, four foot might be fine, just use fences there. Yeah, this fence, you need to reinforce it so the trucks don't drive into it. That's all, it's all getting bent up.
Yeah, well, that, that happens from the Jiffy Loop side, because that big oil tanker coming through that narrow.
But any, anyway, that's, that's what, what I'm thinking. Guys, I, I need your thoughts too.
Well, I think that the um, having just the naked chain link fence on the Waltham side for those last few feet, that would be pretty ugly, and I don't, I wonder if once you get to the end of where you're going to have the fabric through the fencing, if you couldn't just remove the rest of that fence, so you don't have that ugly.
Can I comment? Yeah, go ahead, Brad.
Um, if you remove the end of the fencing, right where you're pointing now, um, people are gonna cut through there to cut that corner and start walking through the lot, that station.
Yes.
And um, and you may not want that in terms of adding pedestrians into, onto the lot. Um, instead of keeping them on the sidewalk.
Well, we had originally talked about planting something like an arborvitae or, I don't know. We'd actually talked about doing plantings at, at one point. I don't know, I, I just think the, a plain chain link fence is pretty ugly.
I would rather keep like Gio said, keep the line of sight, because even, even though Bill said there's a red light there, people run the red lights and people will, a pedestrian will try to scoot through. And for safety reasons, I'd rather have it open.
Is there a way we can split, we can compromise on that and maybe? Yeah, cause I agree with Leslie and I agree, I understand what John and, and Brad are saying too. But the, the chain link doesn't look so hot. Is there a way we could do something with some uh, low uh, ground cover there that would discourage people from cutting through but look half decent, you know, there? Some low line ground cover from that little here on?
There, I, I don't want to agree or disagree with you, Bill, but I, I just want to observe that if you go over to the Stowe Shopping Center, just as you're coming off uh, one seventeen there, they have a low ground cover like you described. It is horrible. It's little spines on it. You can't walk through it.
What's the idea?
It's, it's like tomato, it's, it's, it's like uh, rose bushes with more thorns.
Perfect.
But it's ugly, right? Right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's ugly, oh, alright, oh. Alright, I just, my suggestion, like I, I uh, let the board deliberate.
So what, what's the, the, the general feel of the board here? Uh, John, are, are you leaning one way or another or a third way?
I am fine with the, the way the screening has been laid out. Uh, Paul, I agree with you that it should be six foot on the other side. Um, honestly, I know the chain link is ugly and rusty. I mean, if, maybe if it could get spray painted to look a little better, but I would leave it there, as Gio says, and, and Brad said, people will cut through and when it's icy and snowy, the kids will still try to cut through and fall in and if someone's in one of those trucks and they're trying to back up, they're not gonna see him.
Paige, any comments?
No, I was just wondering if it's possible to compromise by having just the chain link along Waltham Street with some small, it looks like there might be room for some small plantings in front of it. Some low, lower growing plantings. As you get closer to the intersection.
Yeah, Gio, any thoughts on putting some accent plants on the Waltham Street side of the fence?
Yeah, so um, you know, um, this board hearing is the, like putting some restrictions in condition to issuing special permit. And so this is like a very minimal but essential requirement so that we have to abide by it. But other than that, I want you as the part of business owners in Maynard, I want you to um, see me, that leave me as business owner, responsible business owner to uh, maintain these premises as, as attractive to the people as much as possible so that we can have pleasant people. You know, I tried once at thousands of dollars expense. I had once beautiful flower bed, but the, after summer it died out, so I know, um, I learned that it's not an option here, but I mean, at that time I had a lot of comments from the customers. So believe me, we had a good um, fence there, but once the JP Loop oil truck backed in and they denied everything, so we're kind of watching how we're gonna resolve this, but if it's gonna beautify this corner, I'll do it. But I, it doesn't have to be conditioned to the special permit, but I'll do it as business owner in Maynard.
Well, Gio, just to remind you, is that, the board, this board kind of has has to, because it's a downtown overlay district special permit, and it, and as part of the decision, they have to record how that condition was meant. So they're not, right, so it's, it's not, every business owner has to do this.
Right, so basically, there's, there's no soil to plant something. But once everything is fixed today, then we're gonna go uh, reinforce the chain link fence, because we're not gonna leave it like that. We're thinking, how are we gonna do, but not knowing how the zoning board hearing will come out, I couldn't do anything, but if that's something okay with the board, then we'll do it, we'll make it beautiful.
Yeah, so just to be clear, so how? Yeah, so just to be clear, so how the process works is whatever the board decides.
Yes.
But if, you know, we write up a decision with the conditions of it, so. It's 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 very clear and it'll be very, I think it'll be simple for you and simple for the board to understand.
Yeah, um, as.
Whatever they come up with.
As, where's he?
Would it work to um to plant that? Uh, lower section of the fence with something like Virginia creeper? Which is, which just basically maintains itself, but provides uh an attractive native plant screening?
Like like here, Leslie?
Oh, yeah.
The the concern I have on that, Leslie, is if if it grows the way it wants to, it'll make it a solid green wall. It won't get any visibility through it.
Yeah, I I was wondering about some low shrubs here, but that was.
Well, but Gio's saying they they're gonna back out and then go through the. Through between the pumps, like nobody's backing out from there into the street.
Oh, that's the other side, but that side they have to back out all the way.
No, on the Waltham Street side, they're gonna be backing out into the street. Thought you said they were gonna back out towards the street. And then turn left and go through the pump area and out the other side. No?
Yes, so they're gonna turn around like this and then back to the Jiffy Loop side. But if some trucks parked on the Jiffy Loop side. Head in first, they have to back out that way, but in that case, they have to see the cars coming from the other side. So that's the problem. So not this side, but the Jiffy Loop side. Yeah, this side, if the trucks park, like a customer returns car head in first, they don't usually back in. For our convenience, but they just.
I'm not talking about the Jiffy Loop side, I'm talking about the Waltham Street side.
Oh, sorry.
But um that lower. Section of fence could be planted with. Virginia creeper, which is native and maintains itself.
Instead of leaving open chain links?
Well, open chain link is really ugly, sorry, but it will leave.
The the argument that we're hearing here, Leslie, though, is you need to have visibility as you're approaching that intersection corner. And Virginia creeper is gonna camouflage it cuz it's gonna grow all over the fence. I love this picture. Oh, wait, can you put that back, please, Bill?
Yeah, you want the the Gio's.
You want to just add.
All right.
Then is there some other kind of fencing that's not ugly?
Yeah, this this picture here, Gio.
Yes.
You've got those three shrub things in front of the fence. Is that something you could do or is that? Without any soil there because you're right on the sidewalk?
That's that's um, uh, actually, my wife did. But I mean, that's something suggestion. We we can try planting something, but I I doubt it will grow.
Well, now I um you saw Danny um. Schussel from the Tree Committee sent over a nice list of things that would go in that that. Location, he thought, because they're very hardy, they're salt resistant and they're low. You know, the 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 shrubs stay low and he sent a list of those uh types, plant types.
The space will be very narrow. Chain link fence in the sidewalk.
Well, there's quite a bit of space if you take out the chain link fence.
But for the safety issues, we need something because this is slippery, people leaning on it when they slip. And um uh, you know, we have a lot of bicycle kids. And then they fly through it, so that's why I like to keep something visible to them, see. Cars moving, the customers, guest station customers moving in and out. Um, I I I witnessed very many of car crash at that intersection. Because car speed from this Waltham Street going into the um McDonald Street side. And when they make turn, they don't see it, so that's how the accident happens there.
You're talking about reusing the existing fence and just putting the fabric in it, right?
Yes, yes, but.
Yeah, that's right, yep. Sorry.
But basically, that's how the safety considered here, but as a business owner, we'll make it beautiful. So uh, once we, the board votes for the okay for the specifications, then we'll maintain it.
And if you go on Street View and turn down. Powder Mill a little bit, but turn around, so you're looking back at the intersection, it's showing that whole. Fifteen or twenty feet of that fence so overgrown, there's no sight before that shrubbery was cut down, there's no sight lines. In that scenario at all. And I just find it interesting that we're spending so much time on putting in privacy screening for a fence. And using that to demonstrate a significant improvement to the pedestrian experience. When if you look at the gas station. From Powder Mill. I mean, there's just such a tiny amount of sidewalk, it would probably be better, more beneficial to better define the pedestrian areas on the site and redo the curbing. I'm not suggesting that, I'm fine to go with the fencing, but it's just, it seems like. I I personally will need more than just, I think, a little fencing coming down partway and stopping and then existing rusty chain link fence.
So what what are you suggesting, Paige?
I think uh I I'm open to alternative fence that maybe you don't have to screen the whole way, that could provide you with sightlines and looks a little better. Or if there's some low growing, some one of the shrubs that were recommended that are low growing and native. To just add in front of the section where you don't want to screen to maintain sightlines, something along that. That line um. But I I think there's leaving the. Privacy screen and cutting it off halfway and then leaving the rest of the fence as is, I don't personally think that's a significant pedestrian improvement. Just my two cents.
Yeah, and I I'd like to wrap this up somehow. But we're we're having sort of a mixed vision here. Of which way to go or combination of ways. So. If we go with his chain link idea, which is what he's proposing in a in a green color. That's that's one thing, if he can accent the front of it with some shrubs on the upper half. On the on from this view. That would be good on the lower half. Uh, I hear the concern on that lower half of blinding people of what's, you know, coming around the corner at them. So it should be more open. Is it a chain link fence with some shrubs in front of the chain link or behind the chain link? You know, to make it look a little prettier, is that is that the the right answer here?
You know, some, you could put in like a an attractive wooden. Uh, railing kind of a fence.
Split rail fence, yeah.
Yeah, something like that, that's. It's not so industrial looking, but people can see through it. And as Paige pointed out, with the um shrubbery that's been there, you can't see through it anyways. Uh, the way it is.
So would you put the the chain link higher up, Leslie? You know, further back on Waltham Street and just have the one or two split rail sections down at the end?
Well, I guess so, because you need the screening. Further up, but then once you get down. Uh, towards where the tree stump is, all the way down to the side, down to Powder Mill Road. You could have a more attractive kind of a fence. You know, when I moved to this town forty years ago, no, before that, I drove through this town on my way from Boston to Buffalo and I said to my. Husband, God help us if we ever end up in a town like this and we both own houses here now. You know, any little thing that you can do to, this is like a gateway neighborhood. You're coming into town from another town and this is an intersection. That um little by little, I believe is improving. And it's, I I don't think it's too much to ask. To have this little section up made more attractive.
So may maybe that's our vote. Gio, please make it more attractive. Is that enough?
Yeah, but I mean, um, so long as there's no compromise for the safety issues, then we'll do it. I as I told you, that I'll do it as a business owner. I don't want my business be looked down or just like, you know, finger pointed, like, hey, this is. Something like this and I hear you, but also. This is not the residential, this is the business, so people eighty cars, sixty to eighty cars come in and out every day. So we have to be concerned about the safety issue to one little accident could cause. Serious damages to the neighbors and to this town. And then this intersection, I never, I can't really enforce that, how many times I saw the cops with the towing trucks. Cars crash head on here, but in this extent, in this intersection. So we all know and one car hits one car and it goes back to the printing store too. So, so this is the point where we seize many times. So we get that and the bicycle from the school, they. Cycle down this crosswalk and going straight to the Jiffy Loop side and then if there is little fancy. Attractive fence, then people will, the kids will be. I'm thinking they might attempt to like jump over. And then we cannot really stop them. If that happens, then. Then I don't know who's gonna blame, but maybe just having something like this, but I I told you, I kinda. You know, weed control and um um just make sure nothing overgrown. Uh, uncontrolled manner, but I'll do um just cutting trees and trimming if it's necessary to keep everything in the. Uh, control, but I just kind of let grow like this because. Um, as I said, um, the town, one, the the first or second year, they just kind of maintained this sidewalk. So we're kind of waited, but the other side, we usually do it when it's too much overgrown in the backyard and side, but we'll keep it. Pretty.
Okay, so.
As controlled, nothing overgrown.
So your request.
Yes.
Would be to keep the chain link here.
Yes, I'm not insisting to have the same exact condition like this, but chain length fence, the strong one.
And and then camouflage or put in the fabric on the back half?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, if this, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, go ahead.
If safe, if site safety is the issue. And the aesthetics of the fence are the issue for some of the board. There are other alternatives that would achieve both, so for example. If 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 we're, if we don't want to do like these extensive. Um, you know, uh, uh, plantings or trees or whatnot, uh, something like a split rail fence with select. Uh, shrubbery in front of it could do something there to. It 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 wouldn't totally camouflage the 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 trucks, but it certainly would. Provide an alternative aesthetic. Uh, improvement that would probably meet, this certainly make the safety, the visual safety requirements on, I'm talking about on the Waltham Street side.
Yeah, but Bill, I I heard Gio saying that if you had something that the kids could climb on, they would.
Yep.
Well.
Well, if you have low um. Uh, plantings of something like um. Like a U bush or something like that, they're not likely to go. Climbing through a thickly planted U bush. That that's cropped low, so that's not impairing the uh, the. Line of sight.
Well, we, Mr. Chair, you've taken away, I mean, we've identified a number of things that the board does want.
Yeah, I'm trying to sift through all this.
Yeah, would you have me through what I have?
Yes, please.
Okay, we've decided for the most part that um the. Uh, four foot fence or four feet is. The board feels is adequate on Waltham Street side, six feet on Jiffy Loop side of some sort of fence. Okay, weed control, uh, we with mulch. Um, ca- chemical free if possible or eco friendly. We understand if it's a chain link fence, we want colored fabric, in this case, I think they came with the green. Um, no returns after eight P M, maximum of ten trucks, so we're getting, I mean, we're getting there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The thing I wanted to add to that. If if Brian's still here, maybe he could toss in a thought or two is. Let it go for, you know, with Gio's control here for, say, five years. And see if if it works out and if it works out and the weeds are under control and we don't have to worry about it anymore. Then we could just make it in perpetuity. But we're we're having questions about the shrubs. He's worried about getting enough nutrition and water to grow the shrubs. I I'm thinking just let's go with the stockade fence, or not stockade, excuse me, the chain link fence. Four foot and six foot, as you read read back your notes. And let it go. Say five years and if it and if it feels good after five years, let it go forever. That's that's spin on it.
Ah geez, I was thinking one year.
Yeah, I I I picked five because, you know, if he does any decorative shrubbery. It it's gonna take a few years for them to to take root.
With the planning board typically, Mr. Chair, we do a one or two year check in if we have something like this. All right, done with the zoning board, but.
Let's make it two years. Just to check in after two years.
Are there any plantings that you're proposing?
The plantings, um, I got the suggestions and um uh, once. Once we're okay and then coming back in two years, then um I'll have some plantings there too, but. But I mean, you know, I'd like to. Um, present myself to the board that. Um, you know, I like to have my business as beautiful as possible, but. But I'd like to put the safety at the top level there. So that it's like people friendly business to the neighbors, so the the planting wise. I haven't decided anything yet, but um, once I cut everything off. The ground and grass weeds, everything, and then I'll visit myself and then I'll present to you.
Mr. Share, uh, Mr. Share, Mr. Chair, I have the uh, uh. From Danny, the uh list of protect of uh plantings. That that and and why they would, can I share this with you? I I'm very concerned, to be honest with you, I'm very concerned that we're not gonna meet the pedestrian uh improvement on by this. I I I'm, I obviously defer to the board, but I I am a little uncomfortable with the way. That we could say we're improving the pedestrian experience, in my opinion, can I share this, what, this is a.
Yeah, sure.
Cuz there is an extra burden on this because it is downtown overlay. This is, this is um what from the Tree Committee. I I from Danny, if the tree committee, I asked him just what would, how to do this on a budget. And this is what he provided. And um. Now, I'm not saying that everything on here is perfect or, you know, would be useful, but. This was done with the idea of how to do this, how to cut costs, but how to make it a better um. You know, the improve the aesthetics. And this is just one member of the 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 uh committee, of the tree committee, but but it tells you there about what he thought and why.
The 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 list that includes those yellow highlights, those are all uh except the pitch pine, those are all trees that drop their leaves. No, there's another evergreen, red cedar.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Cause this is something you would want to set up year round, not just to have some sticks in the winter. But what are you suggesting with this, Bill? Is this to replace the fence or in addition to the fence?
I, certainly to supplement. If if we're just talking about keeping a a chain link fence there. Uh, I I I I think that that there should be at minimum uh shrubs been as part of this to, but how else, how could we uh put in the decision that we improve the pedestrian experience with through what?
So where would you put the shrubs on the steep slope on his side?
I would, what what I would do would be, I would create a planting plan uh with roughly like maybe with a sh- with a low shrubs, six foot space and down the side of um on uh Waltham Street for sure. Yeah.
On on his side of the fence.
Uh, if 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 he's going to keep the fence in the position where it is, it makes sense to put them on the other, on the, his side of the fence, yes. If he, if he put it, right.
And if you put him on his side of the fence, pedestrians aren't gonna see him.
Oh, you you well, all right, fair enough. Yeah, if he, with the, with the um, with the fabric in there. And you're, right now, if they couldn't go in front, then you you'd have to use specific uh something like uh either the uh Virginia uh creepers or something, just to kind of to give it some color. Or I I give it some sort of atmosphere there, but but right now, okay, that's just my two cents on it, but um.
I I I apologize if I'm overstepping any bounds. I've I've been on the call for a little while now, uh and uh I'm I'm nobody on a board or anything like that. My name is Josh. I live very close to the station and you guys are talking a lot about pedestrian experience and how people might feel about the area in terms of uh the changes made to the fence.
Josh, excuse me a moment, could you please uh first, I need you to uh talk to the chair to request to come on in, identify yourself.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I don't mind hearing, hearing a new voice in this, but i- if you're a a near a butter, let us know where you are.
Oh, sure. Um, but my name's Josh. Uh, I I don't, I apologize if I don't know the procedures very well. Um, I live on Crane Avenue, um so pretty close to the area. I go, I go to that station a lot. I walk by it a lot. Um, do I, do I need to request anything else to be able to speak? Sorry.
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
Address.
Yeah, I, a- all I wanted to say was that from my perspective as somebody who walks by that area a lot, walks around that corner a lot on Waltham Street, the thing that would, I would like the best, that would mean the most to me personally is as a pedestrian, having that that sidewalk is clear and is clean and is not slippery during the winter as possible is is probably my number one because you know, I I I feel like when you're walking by a gas station, you you kind of expect to see a a gas station. Um, but what what's most meaningful to me is there's a lot of traffic there, not slipping, um having plenty of room to walk on the sidewalk. I think prioritizing those things would lead to a really good pedestrian experience as opposed to worrying so much about the plants. Um, so and and some, there was a suggestion made earlier that I thought was really nice too, which was maybe painting, painting the chain link fence to go along with the the green colors of the station. I think that could add to the aesthetic without having to worry too much about the plants too. So um I just wanted to chime in and say I I liked those points and share what I would mean the most to me uh as someone who walks in the area.
Yeah, I I appreciate your thoughts.
Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
So try, trying to get this focused in on this aesthetic, Bill. Um, if you look around town, I can't think of too many other places that have this mandate of being extra pedestrian expen- eh 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 enjoyable, if you will, as you're going through this downtown district. Most of it is storefronts and sidewalks.
That may be true, uh and that per um projects done prior to the downtown overlay district. All the projects I've been involved with uh that involve new uh structure projects have an element where we can uh point to either improving, you know, just a general experience. And if if this board thinks it's adequate and we and we're okay with the the improvements, we've, it's better than it was for sure. I I just, you know, it's my job to kind of, you know, give you uh what I think is is appropriate uh food for thought and um it like you said, there's a lot that we agreed on tonight. So I mean, we got a lot there to to build on.
Yeah, and I I'd like to close it down here and and get this fellow something so we can move it forward. And the thing that is standing on the top of the list as far as I can figure is the four foot chain links filled in on the upper part on Waltham Street and the back half of Jiffy Loop side, uh uh six foot with something filling it in.
Hmm.
Um, other than that, if Gio wants to put some shrubberies in there and if he wants to clean up the steep slope on Waltham Side and beat those weeds down with a weed whacker or chainsaw or whatever, um, I'd say let him go for it. Uh, the goal here is to camouflage the orange trucks behind his station and to make his station a little more presentable. And I think the green fence does a a pretty good first step in getting there without breaking the budget.
Bill, you know whether or not the uh Conservation Commission has any regulations about what sorts of chemicals can be applied to the ground within so many feet of the river?
I honestly don't. No.
I really wonder whether um that's something that you know, needs to be stipulated, could be stipulated um.
Yeah, I I'm honestly not sure about that. Um, and and you know, on the public property, I mean, you know, Chris said there's a difference between that. In this case, where it's a condition of a permit, you know, I I suppose um there's some food for thought there if if the board wanted to, you know, require that or require eco-friendly or whatever the case is. We did that, I can think of like on Maynard Crossing. When we did that, uh for example, there were concerns about certain types of salt to be used because it's so close to our well area. Yeah. So certain things are spec- without specifics uh there.
Mm-hmm.
But I I could find that out, but I don't know off the top of my head, I'll say.
No, we we can put a line in the, in the decision to say environmentally friendly herbicides if used at all.
Oh, who's gonna check that? I guess, what, does everything come down to the building inspector or who's?
Yeah. Right, well, that's, that's why we make it, and any condition that we add to the decision becomes part of the zoning for that, the zoning requirements for that str- that uh project area. So anything that was not compliant, it'd be out of compliance with the zoning. So would Bill be over there every day checking for roundup? Probably not. But but if if something like that was uh discovered, then it would be a violation of building permit. Or vi- I'm sorry, of the um zoning board's permit. Just like it would be if we had uh hours of operation or we had, you know, uh noise or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm hearing, or at least I'm thinking I'm hearing, that we could go with the fence. We could go with Gio putting in some plantings as he desires and we'll see what they look like in two years. I don't want to stipulate which plant he puts in. And we'll put in something about environmental friendly pesticide or herbicides.
Um, I'd like to stipulate that whatever plants go in are native plants, cause that's what we're trying to achieve in the town.
And I think drought and salt tolerant, given the location.
Yeah, well, go find out when they die. He has to replace them, right?
You know, sweet fern was one of the plants that was recommended and um I think that would be a really, you know, it it only gets to be about, you know, a couple of feet high, I think. And it's native and it's very hardy and that might be a really you know, easy one for him to put in and maintain.
And it dies off in the winter, right? It's an annual type growth?
No, it doesn't. No, it's a perennial.
It's a perennial, but it it dies back, right? The root stock is there and the, and the and the stocks, the fern stocks uh grow fresh each year.
You know what? You're gonna have a pile of snow there anyways.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Hmm.
So any chance I can get a motion from somebody to to move this forward?
Uh, wait a minute. Hang on. Oh, I mean.
Well, if the board is gonna make a motion, um remember also, uh we have the, I can pull it up on the staff report, because we do have to address the two special permit criteria. So.
Oh, all right. Right, bring it up so we can see it.
I gotta find it. Let's see here. Um, okay, give me one second. Yeah. Okay. So, there we go.
Gonna click a button or something, Bill. There we go.
Should be coming.
Yeah.
Okay, so whatever the board decides to do, um, they're gonna, this is the standard special permit criteria that we always do. And they would have to, you know, find that they've considered these. This is the downtown overlay district criteria, which talks about, and for a couple of people that have asked, um, you know, why we're doing this, this is what the bylaws require. You shall apply this review criteria. Um. And on the proposed development, we'll do, must do one of the followings. Um. So it's not saying.
The the significant use of the word significant says, if you can't do something significant, you can't do anything.
Right, right.
And that's, that's a little unfair.
Well, I, yeah, that's the story behind that, but I understand your point. Um, and then, so what, this is what the the actual required for the board would be what you're trying to do here. Oops, is everybody there?
Yeah, just, you know, we're just meditating. This is heavy stuff, Bill. So if we look at item C up above, we're not doing anything about public parking. We're not doing it, just, just hang on. We're not doing anything about public space allocation. We're not doing anything about the water quality and storm runoff. We're not doing anything about view to the river. And we're not doing anything about functioning of the downtown. So the only thing we have as a possible thing to do is a significant improvement to the pedestrian experience. And we're not gonna generate a significant improvement. We're just cleaning up a fence line. That's not considered significant? I wouldn't say it's significant. But that's the only thing we got to move anything forward in this case. And then item D down below, besides the natural features, it has to be compatible with the surrounding area. In other words, adjacent parking lots. Cause you got a parking lot at Jiffy Loop, you got parking lots across the street, and you got buildings right up to the sidewalk.
Well, there is one way that a businesses that are in similar situations have managed to um meet the requirements of C um uh three. And because it doesn't say where the significant improvement downtown Maynard has to occur, they've done something like um uh make a work uh uh um a uh fund part of the the donation to the tree fund. Uh, a lot of our uh newer businesses have done that, where they they provide a donation to the tree fund of X amount. And then the trees are given, the money's given to DPW. DPW places the trees in place that they feel is the most appropriate. Cause we have had, like, uh where special permit has been issued and um there's really nothing there to improve. So that's another option that the board could could look at.
I I am uncomfortable with that idea, Bill.
That.
Because that, that to me feels like a bribe.
Yes. I I don't think that's the characterization. I think that is a way to meet the significant improvement and uh I would reject the bribe part, but I understand your point. Yeah.
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Please.
That's a couple of quick things. Um, I think under C, item three for the scientific improvement to the pedestrian experience in downtown Maynard. I live right up the street off of Waltham Street, so I go by it all the time. It looks like hell uh when you come to that corner, just because everything is so overgrown. If you cut all of that down, cleaned up the fence line, you know, screened the upper portion of the fences we talked about and left the lower portion, you know, open for for safety and visibility and repainted that fence, you know, cause it's a a rusty chain link fence, repair it, repaint it, make it look neat, that's significant. You know, I I I I think, you know, listening to this whole conversation, there's a little bit of this without being crass. We're trying to make a silk purse out of a sow's ear. I mean, it is what it is. I mean, it's a fence, it's a gas station. It's not a Marquis Marriott, it's a gas station. Granted, they keep it neat and clean. I like it, but it's a fence, it's a sidewalk that to Paige's point drastically needs approval. I mean, we want to talk about what needs to get improved and what needs to happen as we enter from another town into Maynard Center and the business district. That whole sidewalk needs to, needs work, some serious work, and it's dangerous. So I I think we beat the daylights out of this one. It's a sow's ear, okay? We're trying to clean it up. And I think the the screen fencing, uh clean up the existing, you know, portion of the fencing on on the lower part, leave it open. And if he can put some plantings in, that's great. If not, you know, so be it. But clean it up, that would look a lot better. That's my, for listening for the last hour plus.
Yeah, can you, can you make a motion to that effect?
I just did. If if, yes.
All right.
What is clean up mean, Jerry? Can you tell me what clean up so I can put in the, like, when you say clean up?
Fences we talked about.
Well, the fences, clean the fence, so you're gonna put screening on the, I I say the upper portion of the fence, the uh, you know, as you're coming down Waltham Street. And then I think the last three sections or so of fence are gonna be left open. And those should be, it just cleaned up, you know, straightened out, maybe repainted. And get rid of all of the, I'm gonna call it wild growth that's on the interior and exterior. A lot of it belongs to the town, so I'm not faulting the the gas station owner. I'm faulting the town for some of this. We own it.
We do nothing with it. On the, on the other side of the, the granite is where we stopped the ownership during, the granite. Yeah.
Oh.
So that's.
Okay, 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 then. I'm wrong. Okay, I I thought we owned up to his fence line.
So did I, right? We checked and we don't.
Ah, so he ought to move the fence out further and get rid of all that stuff. No, just kidding. Um, no, so stick it with the motion, just clean up all. no, so stick it with the motion. Just clean up all that stuff. Since he owns it, take all that out of there. Take all that out of there. If you wanna plant grass or put moss, you'll put crushed stone. I think it would look nice with with the heavy, not a small piece stone, but a heavier crushed stone along there. You know, put a fabric down, put crushed stone on top of it.
No more weeds.
No more weeds.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, that that would be my motion.
And then six foot on the other side, six foot screening on the other side.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's all part of your motion.
Yes.
Good. I got a second.
Second.
Awesome. So we have a motion on the table. Before before we take the vote, there's something I need to do, and that's to check if anybody else wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this discussion and this motion. Good. I'm not hearing anything.
No, no. Um, I I want uh it to be stipulated that they can't use um, you know, they're gonna clean this up and and take out plantings um. Still, I want it stipulated that they can't use um non-eco-friendly herbicides, which to me is a um, I can't think of the term because it's, I'm tired, but you know.
Detrimental to the river area would be, right?
Yeah.
No, that's fine.
So that's an amendment to the motion. Good. You got all that, Bill?
I bumped up, I I, right after Jerry's, I I my my, I went out and came back in. I don't know why. I got up to the, Jerry was talking about crushed stone.
Yep, and then and then Leslie wanted to have environmentally friendly uh herbicides.
Yeah, I got that. So are we saying shall be crushed stone placed down there or is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I was saying a fabric and crushed stone on top of that. That limits the uh weed growth. Doesn't completely eliminate it, but certainly substantially limit it. And then you then you've got, you've got clean lines that I think, that's, I think one of the best things we can do to clean it up.
So your vision, like, right along there, right on the base of the, um, okay, that'd be crushed stone. Okay, I got that.
It's a steep slope though, so that it's gonna cascade down unless it's held in place by a root system, like where the grass is now in a steeper part.
We're curving, a little, little class curving.
So Gio, does this make sense to you or or is the crushed stone overkill for you?
Well, if that leaves me an option, then um I'll say it. I'm just worrying about kids picking up the stone and
Yeah.
throw something on the street and cars.
So can we put it in that the crushed stone and and uh fabric would be a suggestion?
Yeah, but the weed control is the requirement I accepted. That's okay. I'll do it.
Yeah. As as, right, and we, and we have one option to that.
Bill, did you get the six-foot fence and screening on the the Jiffy Lube side too?
Yeah, to the part, as as presented in in Gio's presentation, where it goes halfway like.
Yep.
Know what you want? Okay. And the maintenance of the the weeds are in perpetuity, maintaining of it. That it goes, it's a permit. It's not a one-time, one-off, right?
So it's a painted fence.
Right, straighten it.
Optional gravel, maintain weeds in perpetuity. That's a a significant pedestrian improvement with the with partial privacy fence.
And the and the color of that fence, Gio was recommending uh a green that's similar to his logos. And I I think that's okay. All right. We captured everything in our long-winded motion?
Uh, I think so.
Um, what about the um, how long before we revisit? Did we?
Two years, two years.
How, two?
Two.
That's what I had.
Yeah, and hopefully that will be a a quick review. Hey, it looks great, Gio. Thanks. Right?
So what we can do, when I do these check-ins, so it doesn't cost any money or anything like that, we we specify it's a check-in at a at a posted meeting rather than a public hearing. So we don't have to go through the advertising and this. We just advertise it on the agenda. Gio can come in. And we may, and then if there's a problem with it, the board can say, hey, we got this problem with it and we're gonna, you know, fix it. But we don't have to go with mailing and all this type of thing. That's.
Excellent. It's a, it's a good workaround. Thank you, Bill.
My concern is that I still think that we need to have the Conservation Commission weigh in on any sort, not just, you know, you can't use Roundup. I wanna know about any sort of chemical um herbicide. And is there some way to to um have that? And that's one of the reasons why I'm concerned about the two years, because if we check in with them and then they say, oh, they shouldn't be doing that. I don't want it going for two years before we can tell them, oh, you can't do that.
How about this, Leslie? How about we say, okay, we 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 will word it out where the chemical um eco-friendly chemicals uh and with the stipulation, the Conservation Commission uh shall be the final um.
Arbiter?
Arbiter on um if there's any restrictions, further restrictions. We'll just refer, we can defer to their restrictions.
I would, I would suggest that if Gio wants to use a particular chemical, that he simply ask the Conservation Commission if it's acceptable. And if they have a better suggestion, it'll do the same kind of chore, they can recommend to him. And so for the environmentally friendly, eco-friendly pesticides, why don't we put in that uh approval by conservation?
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I I I will buy the Conservation Agent or the Conservation Commission.
Yes. Are they different?
Well, typically, it's like when you guys do with me, uh, you would, you would empower me on your behalf to do, you know, Scott Monkey.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, okay, and we'll defer, we'll defer to conservation. How's that?
Yep.
Okay.
So we got all that?
I think so.
Good. Any other comments, additions, modifications? Good. I'm gonna do a roll call. Paige?
No. Oh, sorry, Bill.
So wait, we gotta, uh, we're doing, we have to, um, let me get we we uh have to be specific. So let me get my handy-dandy staff report back. Okay, there we go. All right. So what we wanna do here is, if we could go, this is what the vote is gonna be for, that we've done one, two, three and four, Paul. Sorry, Paige.
So are we voting on each individual?
Now, now, now it's getting crazy. We have a motion on the floor.
Right.
Discussed all of this.
Right.
We've got the significant improvement pedestrians.
Right.
And the proposed use is no more detrimental to the, what is this one for? The proposed use, for what?
Uh, when, when you are um the, they're, you're changing, you're adding another use to the, the, this is a service station, and we're adding that the uh overnight storage of the vehicles is no more detrimental. It's a standard finding.
So we're talking item number four, granting the special permit to allow overnight storage of the of the vehicles?
That's, okay, yes. After, we've considered these and we have the motion on the table for that.
But we're not yet, not yet. We're still, we're still steel, dealing with the fence. We're, we're back asswards here. We haven't, we haven't put a motion on the floor for storing vehicles and how many and the signage for it and so on.
Right, okay.
So so far, we have the motion and seconded with all these conditions for the significant improvement of the pedestrian experience. That's it. That's all we've got. And so I would like to have a vote on that, assuming that we're doing this so that he can do the truck stuff. Because I don't wanna have two motions loose on the floor at the same time. The second motion that I'll ask for would be the number of vehicles and all the criteria for that.
So is this number three, is the, well, point number three under section six?
Mm-hmm.
Essentially.
I think so. Yes.
Okay.
Is Brian, Brian, are you still on? Oh, hi, hi, Brian. I just wanna make sure I'm not making, yeah, I want just to make sure we're, what we're doing here. Right now, we've got the two criteria for special permit that we've been over.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we, special permit standard and special permit downtown overlay district. Right now, the board, it wants to take a vote, if I'm correct, Paul, you wanted to take a vote on if we, the condition met a C three, correct?
Yeah, and we have a whole bunch of conditions that we've, we've polished up and put into this, this motion.
Yep, so my question brought in since I have it here. If I don't, if this requires a super majority, right, four zero, I mean, four, one, one, um, if, or or am I, I'll let you, go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, this is a preliminary vote. You haven't gotten to the vote on whether or not you're gonna grant the special permit or not. And so this is preliminary. See if the board has a consensus with respect to C three. If you do, great. Now you've established the conditions that are gonna govern the ultimate use. Then you're gonna take an ultimate vote, which I think is the second motion. Uh, Mr. Chairman, you were suggesting you'd ask for after this vote, which would be on the ultimate um decision whether or not to grant the special permit, which you will now know is subject to the conditions that the board just approved.
Thank you.
Does the preliminary have to be a super majority? That's my question.
Uh, it doesn't, but if it doesn't get a super majority, you're gonna have a hard time with the next vote, I suppose.
Fair enough, okay. And they could reconstitute it presumably? Then if they, well.
Yes, and so, I mean, considering the robust discussion you just have, I I hope it's successful. But if it isn't successful, there's nothing to stop anyone from making a new motion.
Got it. That's what I needed. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, before we vote, can we just, can I get some clarity on what is, are we proposing stones? Are we proposing plantings? I'm just not clear on what the final condition will look like.
The the final conditions would be the fence line on Waltham Street being solid chain links with some fabric on the upper half and open painted, cleaned up chain link on the lower half. A six-foot chain link on the back half of the Jiffy Lube side and cleaned up on the front half. The back half being filled in with some fabric on that side. As far as the ground cover kind of stuff, um, weed control to make whatever grass or or shrubberies that are there look presentable and organized. Uh, we're not mandating that he uses a weed killer. We're not mandating that he uses gravel. We offered a few suggestions.
Okay, and that's essentially what's there, just to clarify. It looks like it's currently grassed where there's some plantings that maybe needed a little more.
Yeah, then then he should probably run a weed whacker on it or something to clean it up. But those two big ugly tree stumps uh he can attack as at will, because I think they're through the chain link.
Okay. And I, I, I don't think it's the secret, but I I think I personally would need more than that to find it a significant improvement. To me, that's just putting in some privacy fence, privacy screening along half a fence and then maintaining existing conditions, but painting a portion of the fence.
Okay.
I don't know if you need my vote to keep this going.
Well, we'll see. Let's let's grab that vote. And so, uh, Paige?
Yeah, I I vote no on the significant improvement.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Leslie? Leslie?
No, it's it's a far cry from what we started out talking about.
And Jerry?
Yes.
So we're three to two. I'm a yes as well. So those conditions are not good enough. Is the way I'm reading it. We got two noes on it. And so the question for Paige and Leslie is what additional stuff would you require to get your vote?
Um, for me, it would be a more aesthetically pleasing kind of fencing and some um native plantings like sweet fern. And it seems to me that um, you know, like when we, when the pot shops were uh petitioning, their their improvements to the downtown was something like planting trees. Like, it wasn't just that they were gonna paint, you know?
No, that's right. That that's true, but that's what I pointed out earlier. And I, they, they, I agree that they made donations to the tree fund, and that's how we did. We put all new trees downtown. We put two or three new, um, I think we put new tree wells in at least one place. And some various um street furniture and that type of stuff, but.
On the property that they were moving into?
No.
So it's a bribe. So you did a bribe somewhere else in town?
Paul, I don't think you should say that.
But that's what it is.
It's not, I, it's a mitigation and I I it's not a bribe.
I hate to say it, Bill, but all the training I've had in at my work, they call it greasing.
That seems like a shakedown, doesn't it? Yeah, it does.
It's an, it would be considered an ethics violation where I, where I work.
So Paige, what what are your concerns?
Um, I think I echo what Leslie was saying. I I think we need a different fencing type where that's not going to be screened or some low-growing uh drought tolerant and native vegetation. And I don't, and just reading the downtown overlay district criteria, it's proposed development will improve the functioning of the downtown. Doesn't necessarily have to be at that site. So if they wanted to, if they're claiming they can't do anything else at this site, and I would be open to doing something somewhere else. But I also wanna echo, I think Bill said earlier that during the site visit, nobody had or any concerns about site distances. And during this, looking at street view, that whole lower half of the fence was so overgrown, you couldn't have, see that site distance anyway, or that sight line is already impeded.
So on on the fence type, it needs to be a solid fence, not a a split rail fence. And and that we got from uh the highway department, because they need to have something that is stroller-proof. So that, you know, kids on bicycles or strollers don't fall through and go down the hill on that upper part. So we need to have that curb in place and we need to have a solid fence there. So the question is, with that solid fence there, where can you put a decent shrubbery?
How about if it was the kind of fence that they have in front of the um mill along along Main Street that's like a black wrought iron kind of fence. You can see through it, but it's um a lot more aesthetically pleasing than um, than a chain link fence.
They'll have to refinance this gas station.
Yeah, that's expensive. We saw what we did for
Big money.
For our historical commission.
And then maybe they need to re, look at the site and see what other potential pedestrian improvements can be accommodated. I don't, the Jerry mentioned that the sidewalk across the site is in pretty bad disrepair. Uh, maybe there's opportunities to better define the pedestrian space across the site to make it safer for people who are trying to cross their, across through their site between the two driveways. If there's nothing, if there's absolutely nothing else that could be done at this corner. If that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, but the whole sidewalk area is town-owned. So it'll be the town doing it, and that's not gonna. So it'll be the town doing it, and that's not gonna happen. You know that. It's just a point of interest. We changed a few weeks ago in the design at Green Meadow School. Uh, to all four foot. Uh, coated black, uh, chain link. Cause we have some other fencing in and it just, you know. It 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 was spending money on something that we didn't need to spend money on. Uh, way too expensive. Uh, and and less repairable. Uh, the chain link is extremely repairable. Uh. You know, it's not the most beautiful looking thing in the world, but. It it functions appropriately and it's safe.
Jerry, can I ask a quick, was is it black because that's tends to disappear more and be less visible?
Yes.
I wonder if that's if the fence was changing painted black. Instead of the metal, it would. Be less visible.
Yeah, I've I've done the black vinyl. Yeah, I've done a black vinyl coat at a lot of places and, uh, it isn't. It isn't that obvious at all, but I mean. I mean, that's a corner that whatever you put there, you're gonna see it, you know, that they again. It's a silk purse or something else. Uh, but the black vinyl, I like the black vinyl and you put the slats in it. Uh, for the path that you're gonna cover, uh, that you're trying to shield from seeing the U-Haul trucks being parked. And the last, you know, two sections or three sections you leave open. Uh, but the black vinyl is a, it's a good fence and it lasts for years. And they look, you know, I put one in about eight years ago and on the property and. You go over and look at it, looks exactly the same today as it did then. Doesn't rust, doesn't change.
Ask one more question, Leslie, if 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 Gio put in. Um, some of the plantings that were from Danny's list from the tree committee, would that satisfy your? He had to pick from one of those, the the plantings from the list?
Um, if he painted the fence. And then did some plantings, um, that would go a long way.
Is it enough, Leslie?
Um. Um. Probably if he did something like, uh. Painted the fence and then, uh. Put down. Some gravel or something and then left a strip where he planted something like sweet fern. And maintained it.
You're talking on the sidewalk side?
Yes, I guess so.
Because there's very little room there.
Well.
And that can the fence be realigned? Cause Bill mentioned the town only owes up owns up to the curb if if sizes. Or an area is a concern.
I would say that the fence needs to be pretty close to that curb because it's a steep slope. And if you move even a foot away from that, you're moving down the slope.
And it looks like there is room for plantings because there's some existing plantings currently there on the on the other side of the fence on the. Gas station side.
Yeah, but he he needs to have a solid fence for for the camouflaging. And the plantings on the other side don't improve the pedestrian experience.
Or closer down to the intersection. I think there's room on the gas station side of the fence where it won't be. Screened with the vinyl slots.
Well, I think you could do it there, but they gotta be, you know, like limited to max height two feet. Something so if somebody's sitting in in an automobile, not an SUV or a truck, an automobile can. If they're gonna pull out, they can, they can look through the fence, they can see if somebody coming down Waltham Street is taking that right hand turn. Even though it's a red light and they're not supposed to. Uh, they might be coming down. Many people don't do stop. Look both ways and then take the trip. They just keep going. So it have to be, I I agree, there is grass, there's a, you know, a small. Area there that you could do some plantings in that corner area, but I'd suggest they gotta be limited to two feet. In height.
Well, I think that, uh, sweet fern. Sweet fern is not a tall growing. Plant.
You know, I think it can be trimmed to keep it that that lower height if it start, if it does start to. Go higher.
Got a couple other pictures from the other side too. I just found what I took. Let's see, um. The here's the good one with the angle.
No comment. No picture yet.
Oh, you don't have it yet?
No.
Well.
You started sharing, but it doesn't know what it's sharing yet.
Okay. Let's try it again. Oh, this is not response. On. Doesn't like what's what I'm doing.
Well, Bill, we broke my record anyway. This is the longest time I've ever sat and talked about a fence.
Sorry. Well, in the meantime, it's claw, I've clogged up the pictures here, so I better propose them. Okay.
So basically, Bill, if we can't get this fence thing figured out. Gio's out of luck, period.
Well, I mean, he he has an awful lot here that he can go on with and come up with a plan based on what the the towns, I mean, what you guys told him. We spent two hours on it. I think there's plenty of, uh, information going on. I would like to have him. Done tonight, but I don't, I mean. The board has been pretty clear. Disappoint, do you have, can you see anything right now, guys?
You're frozen, Bill. Your 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 picture is frozen too.
Oh. Okay, I'm gonna let it. Here's what, let me see if I can do this. Okay, well, I can hear you, and if you can hear me, you can just keep talking and it'd settle down in a second.
You know, I don't, I don't mind the idea of putting shrubs in there. I was hoping Gio could come up with some suggestions of where he would put what kind of shrub. But there is not that much dirt space between the curb and the chain link fence for him to do anything. And if that's the argument point that we can't resolve, he's done. I mean, to me, that's a real simple issue. Let him figure out where he can put some shrubs. And it it gotta be small because there's not much dirt there to put them in. Go ahead, Brad.
Um, maybe, um, this is something that we can do or we can let him. Do what he can along the lines of what it is that Paige and Leslie are looking for. With that understanding and come back in a year or two. And see if he's if he's done that.
Cause right, right now, he won't have the U-Haul trucks. He can still. Do whatever he's doing, leave that that sort of hairy green line there on Waltham Street and not worry about us. But if he wants the U-Haul trucks. We've got to figure out a way to. To approve it, and right now I'm hearing we can't approve it.
And I would feel more comfortable approving if there was a condition that some native drought tolerant. And probably salt tolerant plantings be added. I don't necessarily feel the need to be as specific to say. Exactly where they need to go other than somewhere along the unscreened portion of the fence. I don't know if that's the condition that they would be open to. But that would address my concern.
He he he's willing to to clean it up and to make it look pretty. And on that exposed side. Of the open chain link down there on Waltham Street. He really can't go too high because now he's potentially incurring a a vision vision liability. So a low level plan.
Essentially.
That he was willing to do that.
Yeah, and as long as it's drought tolerant and native and I'm on board.
There are a couple of native use. Um, I don't know if they're drought tolerant or not.
We've got the whole list. I mean.
What?
We've got a whole list here. I mean, that he sent that Danny sent from the tree committee.
Yeah, and I believe that was shared with him previously.
Yeah.
And if he wants to pick some of those, I don't, I don't need to vote on which tree he picks.
No, but as Paige said, you know, by by saying, you know, it's, you know, a, um, salt. Tolerant, drought resistant. Space them out at a, you know, so that it's a s-. A line or however you want them or wherever you want them generally. And maintain in perpetuity. And the area.
There's a choice of twelve right there.
Mm hmm.
Well, some of those look like they're they're gonna get quite large, and so that's an issue. Um.
So you pick one that's got a a tentative height of a foot or two.
Mm hmm.
You know, it's not camouflaging anything at that point. It's. It's just a a vision interrupter to make it look pretty.
Yeah.
I mean, really, if you look at this. Um. More or less, this is exactly what you're saying. I mean. Right where we, you know, I think if you're gonna keep the fans.
I think you're, uh. I don't know, I just feel like we're overblowing the whole, uh. Line of vision thing and the doing something like Virginia creeper or, um. Uh, like a U or some, not that he mentioned U bushes, but.
Some of them can become quite unruly. Like the Virginia creeper, once it gets going. You're you're trimming it like a like a hedge.
Mm hmm.
And that Bayberry, that's the one with the stickers that Paul you were mentioning is up at the Plaza and still.
Oh, is that the one?
Yeah, number six.
Well, like you said, you don't have to specify it.
Right. Pick one.
Figure it out. You gotta come back in two years if it doesn't work.
And Jerry, what was, what was your motion, Jerry, with all your additions to it? I I thought you said that. He could pick some shrubs to go in and clean it up.
I did. Yeah, I mean. We we just did a bunch here too, and what about, uh, like a, uh. What do you call it? Uh, what are the berries, uh? They they, if you put two of the berry trees together, one helps pollinate the other one.
Cherry, it's like the cherry bushes and.
Uh, yeah, it's a different berry. I just can't think of it. But you can keep them trimmed low. I've got them in my side yard. Mine are about four feet, but I could have them down to three feet. But I don't have a reason to cut them down. But they could, they're easily trimmed. You trim them once a year after the spring growth, you trim the new growth off and. You maintain the height. That's it. End discussion. Don't do anything to them. They stay green all year.
So. Bill, do you have some kind of a shorthand notation on Jerry's motion with all the additions we threw at it?
Uh, y- yeah, I what the what the thing, uh, from Jerry's. Wait, here's what I have from Jerry's motion. It it was all gonna be a two year check in. Again, get clean up the sidewalk, clear it, clean up, uh, the Waltham side screening, uh, uh. Painting the fence, um. And maintain the, uh, you're straight in the fence, maintain, uh, the, uh. The landscaping in perpetuity and, um. With green fence, uh, uh, fabric. And it would be go up to the half, um, you know, where we said we're gonna, we're, you'd stop it at that, at the portion where you wanted to end it. Uh, we had the conservation commission with the sa- the roundup safety. Uh, um. Condition. And we had, um. And that was where that was Jerry's. Now adding, we would put, uh, stipulate, um, we, it was never clear on the crushed. The the crushed, uh, stone was was not stipulated, it was suggested. Um, we didn't, we didn't, we haven't mandated anything about specific. Uh, where planting should go, the drought. Uh, and salt tolerant plantings, so.
But we had, we had it in there that there that that Gio would be putting in something, right?
Yeah, but we didn't, we didn't say like, we help, you know, like, like here, for example, on the suggestion. That, um, that the tree committee sent us there, we had, you know, they said like, okay, so we, for example, shrubs every ten to twelve feet. To if we, you know, or or and then fill in with a small medium shrubs or whatever. So I don't, it doesn't sound like there's anything specific. That was what, that was, we're the plantings.
And that that's where I thought that Gio would would run with this and and do something that he sees as reasonable. And we would check in in two years because that gives a plant a couple of years to establish themselves and.
Yeah.
And if it's good enough or not.
So I can do that.
So then we wanna re- remotion this?
Paul, I think we just need to add the amendment that that they should be drought and salt tolerant. I think that's Paige, quickly if I'm wrong, I think that's what you were looking for.
Yep, yeah, exactly, and native.
Native.
And native, yeah.
Burning bush doesn't count?
Uh huh.
Definitely not.
It's a beautiful plant.
I know, my wife will let me get rid of ours.
And the one I was thinking of a while ago is the holly bush. That's all.
Oh, holly bush, yeah.
Yeah.
No bittersweet.
Eight bittersweet. All right. So with this amended addition to Jerry's. Motion. I'd like to revote it. Can we do that? You ready, Paige?
Mm hmm.
What's your answer?
Yep, I'll vote yes.
All right, John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes as well. Okay, now on to the main feature of the evening.
Okay.
This, this would be the stipulations for the beautification of Maynard. Relative to him getting the trucks. So. Uh, Bill, could you put up his truck map?
The truck map, yeah. Let me, um. The the from his, uh, his presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Because that's gonna go into the record.
Yeah, let me just get it here. I got a, uh. Okay, and open up. There we go. Okay, you guys should be able to see that now.
Nope.
No?
Oh, yes, there we go. Yay. Scroll down to that last slide, please.
Yeah. That one?
Yes, thank you. So. You've got this map here, Gio, of ten trucks. And what are the yellow trucks?
That's, uh, just, for example, during day operation, the trucks. Um, the left side, the Jiffy Lube side truck demonstrates when the customer returned car instead of, um. Gas pump. When they have a fill in gas somewhere and then when they return, they usually park like that. Not like a head in side.
All right.
So that has to be rerouted, um, re-operated and go back when we close the store. Just like where orange location is showing.
Okay.
Yeah, ready to go. Sorry.
What we're looking for is the overnight storage of the vehicles. That's what you're gonna be.
That's orange.
Uh, okay, and so those ten spots. And there, those are not customer-driven trucks to that point. You guys are driving those trucks and parking them, is that right?
Yes.
So we don't have to worry about park here, please kind of signs.
No, 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 no.
Okay. So basically, you're asking, can you store? Ten vehicles? Not to exceed twenty-five thousand GVWs?
Yes.
Any chance of getting one over to twenty-five thousand?
Because, um, I already notified you all that my site is very limited. So no big trucks. But some customer, they come. And then we tell them we cannot have you unless you get directed to other near site in the store or act in.
Alright.
They, they, they have original destination, but they're trying to. Change location to Maynard, but so long as the system doesn't allow them, they cannot return.
Okay, and you're gonna be during business hours, so there'll be somebody there to reject the large truck.
Yeah, otherwise it'll be trespass.
Okay. So to me, that makes a rather simple set of conditions for the special permit. That. You've got ten trucks and a location to store those ten trucks. They're all under the twenty-five thousand GVWs. You're all only during. Business hours. Now, where are we doing? Oh. You're jumping around on me, Bill.
Yeah, just getting everything ready. What do you want? Do you want anything up?
Not yet. I want to find out from the, the other board members what their thoughts are on this. Paige?
I'm still digesting it a little bit, but I don't see, nothing jumps out to me immediately.
All right, Leslie?
No, I'm fine with it.
Thanks. Brad?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
Thanks, John?
I'm good.
Jerry?
I'm good.
Awesome. Bill, did you capture all of that?
Yeah.
So. Now, on your, your checklist that you were zipping by is there a minute ago. One of the conditions would be. We've reviewed the downtown overlay. Issues. Where are, where are we? ABC. We're six dash one. Determination, special permit is described. I, I don't know which one's which in all these code numbers right now.
Number one is standard special permit. Number two is DOD special permit. And three is the special permit.
Yeah, so the criteria for regular special permit in ten-fourth. What is that all about? Can't remember all this.
That, that's our one that we always use, this one up here.
Unity, social needs served, sure. Traffic flow, sure. Adequately of utilities, sure. Neighborhood character, sure. Natural environment, yep, no problem. Fiscal impact on taxes, sure. He's, he's gonna be paying taxes. I better, I better hope. So, yeah, we considered all that.
Well. That's an interesting question because. In what way does this change? The taxes because the town, the trucks that are flowing through here are probably not registered in Maynard.
He's paying income tax.
Yeah, personal property.
So, are we good? Bill will write up the decision. Commenting that we reflected on everything that we're supposed to reflect on.
Right. Yeah, I'll write that, that the determinations. And then, then the board would just need to vote on number three. They want to grant the permit.
Number three.
Six dash three down the bottom.
Yeah, oh.
So can I get a motion to that, that it would be ten trucks? Only stored overnight and they would be parked by. In attendant?
So moved.
Excellent. Do I get a second?
Second.
Alright, John seconds. Any further comments? Alright, Paige?
Yes.
Woo-hoo, John?
Yes.
Uh, Leslie?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes as well. So after spending several hours in this discussion, Gio. I think we have reached a favorable conclusion for you.
Thank you.
Um, so now we can close the public hearing on this. And move on to our next case.
Yeah, I'll be in touch, I'll be in touch with you, Gio. It'll take, it'll take, uh, about, uh, next week or so to draft up a decision. Uh, we'll run over the board and I'll, I'll follow up with you what needs to be done next.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. So is our next case, are the petitioners here? Are they still willing? Sorry about that.
Hey, you know, what are you gonna do?
So let me read the, the, the announcement here. It's a public hearing for twenty-two Crane Ave. Special permit application filed by Lois Tetrol and Christie White. Twenty-two Crane Ave, Maynard, the subject property is a non-conforming, single-family dwelling on a conforming corner lot. In a single-family S-one district. Subject property is non-conforming. Due to insufficient setback, twenty-five feet required, but you only got twelve. And side setback fifteen required, twelve provided. Per Section four-one and five-one-three of the Maynard Protective Zoning Bylaws, the applicant is seeking a special permit allowing construction of a deck. Which would extend the existing encroachment into the twenty-five-foot front setback. If granted, the new deck would not exacerbate the existing non-conformity. Wow, okay.
It would not exa- exacerbate, mate. But it wouldn't exacerbate the conformity.
Alright, so the petitioner. Please describe. I gotta get a drink. I'll be right back.
Board, while, while the chair is getting a, a drink, I think the staff report here, I'll pull it up, the staff report, this is, um. I- in this case, the, uh, the proposed deck. Does not, um, create a, a, a further encroachment of the setback. So this is, um. They are, uh. Proposing a deck that will, but it does increase. It does encroach on the. We start again, we're all tired, okay? There, there's an encroachment of this, the setback with the new. Proposed deck. It does not exacerbate the encroachment.
So if, if, if you're just reiterating what was in the. What I read, that's cool. But I think they should explain what it is. They're trying to do, and a map would help.
I didn't know you were here, okay? You're back, okay.
Hi, yes, thank you, Paul. Thank you, Bill and everybody. Uh, it's been, uh, a pleasure to be able to have a, a peek behind the, the curtain, uh, for, for what hap- how decisions get made here in Maynard. Um, so, uh, if I may have, well, I'd like to just take one second and acknowledge our neighbors who have been here. For hours, uh, we have two, uh, neighbors, uh, from Crane Avenue who just. Are here to show some support, um, so I, I'd like to acknowledge that they're here, including Josh who spoke up earlier. And, uh, Kelsey and Sarah over at twenty-one Crane, so thank you for, for that. Um, this deck is part of a larger, uh, re-renovation that we're doing right now. We love Maynard, we want to age in place, and we're excited to, uh, make the interior of our, our home. Uh, accessible and we'd like to add some decking as well, uh, also to that, um. To that goal. Um, our yard is pitched, uh, pretty significantly. And without decks, we, we aren't really able to enjoy, enjoy it fully, and I think as we, as we age. Um, that will just become, uh, more clear. Um, so we're looking forward to adding this deck as part of a larger renovation that will allow us to, um. Enjoy the, get the full use of the yard and, uh, provide us with some s- flat space in, on the exterior.
So I, I saw a map somewhere, a plan of.
I have a slide, uh, if, if that would be helpful.
Yes, please.
Um, and I'm gonna go ahead and do a screen share then, if that's okay?
You should be able to, you should be able to, uh, share it now, Kristi.
Okay.
Oh, there we go.
Are you able to see it okay?
Yes, yes, we've got it now, thank you.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. So as you can see, the yellow line is our property line. And, uh, the area where we're of. In question, and I'll just give you a, a close-up here, is that, uh, five feet of deck that's highlighted in green. That, uh. A- as you can see, encroaches into the twenty-five-foot setback area that, uh, goes to the front of the yard to Crane Avenue. Um, the front of our house is, has a stone wall, stone retaining wall, and that is. Um, very, very close to the property line on Crane Avenue. So this deck in question is almost in the middle of our property. It's, it's, uh, it won't be. Any, you know, it won't be. Exacerbating the.
Okay, and the reason you need this particular piece of deck is what?
Yeah, so, um. We are planning on, as part of the renovation, we're going to be installing French doors. Right from our dining room area, which will, uh, which is to the immediate right of the deck. Of the proposed deck. And so we'll be able to, um, have a transition from. Interior to exterior, uh, being able to utilize this deck. In that way, and I did want to add that the deck will be, you know, will be using, um, a composite material. Um, and the design of the deck is, is going to be using materials and, and, um. Design elements that are consistent with the neighborhood.
We have virtually no flat space on our yard whatsoever, and so we, we do like to have a place. We would like to have a place other than our driveway to. Put chairs and, and probably, you know, a place for, for outdoor dining when we have friends over and that kind of thing. And that's why we'd like to have a, a fairly substantial deck because we are kind of outdoor people, but. As we get older, we'd like to be able to be outdoor people without rolling down the hill.
Yeah.
It's a very steep lot.
It, the, the challenge that I see here is, in this image you're showing. You have a pretty extensive deck that. We don't have to make any comment on. The issue is the highlighted area.
Yeah, it's five feet, a five-foot section.
And that five feet is what we need to get the special permit.
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
So what is special about that five-foot extension beyond the deck that's. Beyond our control to say yes or no to? We're just looking at that five foot.
Well, simply because it, it, um. I mean, we, we've hired an architect, we've, we're kind of trying to make something that the, the whole plan is something that is visually appealing. As well as functional. And we feel that, that, that last five feet of deck will make, make it much more usable for us.
So. Oh, you can't have two things open at once. Bill?
Yeah, what would you like, Paul?
What I'm looking for are the special permit. Criteria. That we could, you know.
Yeah.
Contemplate with these people. We can figure it out.
I think we can do it. I'll get it. Let me just get the.
Cause she's sharing right now.
Right, I'm gonna get rid of that chair right now. Let's see, now. See, let me share, I have it. Okay, we place current share. Oh, by the way, here's the graphic, uh. Here's the graphic that, uh, that kind of went with the staff report that I did, just to kind of give you if it helps at all to board. Can you see that?
Yeah, I, I see that, and I, I had a question on that because it looked like there was another deck.
We're talking about the blue, the blue area?
No, no, on the right side of the building, it looked like there was another deck that was.
Oh, here?
Yeah.
Uh, maybe, uh. I don't know, Kristi, what you got there?
Sorry, is there, is there a, could you repeat the question, please?
Well, I'm confused. Uh, it was either this diagram or another one that I saw. At the right, yeah, where his mouse is there. There, there's another deck there or something? Is that reconstructed or old stuff?
This one.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, we can, we can, we'd be happy to address that. That is already a current deck that's already in place. And we're, we're just doing minor, uh, we're reconfiguring it.
Right, and when we talked to Rick Asman, he said that, and actually that on the right-hand side. We're actually gonna be taking away a lot of the existing deck that is there now.
Oh, okay.
So, um, that's already there, but we'll actually be taking quite a bit away to make that so.
So you say you're on Crane Ave. Are you on a side street as well?
Yeah, so it's Crane and Garfield.
Oh, there's Garfield underneath your box, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so you basically have two front yards.
Yes.
Alright. So. Bill, if you could put up that, that criteria for the special permit.
Right, and. Twenty-two Crane, there we go, and. You see it yet?
No.
Starting. There you go, thank you. Where are we? Right in there. Hold it, don't move anymore. So. Ladies, what, what we need to do is understand. Consideration of these. Six items, A through F at the top of the page.
Um, Bill, can I make a request? Uh, would you mind just magnifying the, the font a little bit?
Uh, that's a good question. I don't know.
Bill, there's a little magnifying glass down on the right side, the lower right.
On, yeah, oh, oh, I got you guys over it, okay, alright, yeah. You were right, you were sitting on top of it, John. Couldn't see it. Let me move you over here, okay.
Alright, so it's, it's those six items that we shall need to consider. The determination shall include consideration of each of the following. Characteristics of the site. Proposal in relation to that site. And so on. And the challenge that, that we need to be. And the challenge that that we need to be able to address for posterity is why those five feet need to be there.
Um, Paul, did did Lo- I I think Lois did address that question a little earlier. Um, is that not adequate? Do you need more than?
The French door thing, right?
Um, no, she well, she had said, she had mentioned that we are working with an architect. And uh we wanna make sure that the the deck is not just functional for a family setting. Um, but also is is um aesthetically pleasing. And the current proposed deck with the five feet really is um uh in terms of scale, really uh works well aesthetically with the rest of the scale of the house and the yard. In addition to being um giving us the just the functional space uh to be able to hold family activities out there and enjoy the yard.
Okay, and if you read the intro paragraph there that Bill's displaying, any adverse effects of that special permit granted thing not outweighing the beneficial impacts in view of the characteristics of the site in relation with the proposal, and considering these six items. So the neighborhood character, I think you've explained that. Uh fiscal impact, your taxes might go up. Impacts on the environment, I don't see any. Adequacy of public services, again, I don't see any problem, traffic and parking, not a problem. And social needs, yeah, you can come out in and out of your house, I think that answers it. But I would like to hear from the other board members to see if they have any other spins on it, pro, con, or other. Go ahead, Leslie.
Oh, I'm totally in favor of it.
Okay, Jerry?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good, I see no problem.
Paige?
Same.
Gary, or John, excuse me.
I'm good.
This is scary, I think we're adding right on a positive note. So Bill, as the watchdog of my fumbles, how am I doing?
Top shelf.
So this this one I'm working out okay, right?
This one, we're in tall cotton, if you just got through the vote here.
The other thing that I I wanted to comment on relative to this deck thing is it is almost a de minimis addition.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Cause you're only moving five feet into what is a twenty-five foot setback.
Right.
And it's a it's a double front yard, cause of the corner lot.
Yeah, right.
Yes, that that's right.
Brad?
Um, there is one other non-conformity with this lot, which is the percentage of structure coverage. Um, and S one area is allowed to be fifteen percent. And before this stack is being put, uh addition is being put on, it's already at eighteen percent. So I don't know if that's really much of a consideration, but um it's something that I think that should at least be mentioned.
Oh.
Which, you know, when you're saying eighteen percent, is that with the new deck, the whole big new deck?
No, that's a, that's existing.
Okay.
There's um, yeah.
Yeah, it's existing, I have the, but is this, is this a covered deck?
No, it is not, and and Rick Asman said that because it was not a covered deck, that it did not count as part of our percentage.
That's correct.
To be perfectly honest, we um are what we really wanted to do, because we need to make our house so that we can live entirely on the first floor. I have herniated discs and my uh my my mobility is not going to improve over the years. Uh, but because of that percentage that we're already at, uh, we nixed the idea of trying to get a variance for an addition. So we are we are trying to, we're we're gonna be trying to live in about seven hundred and eighty square feet of living space. Uh, the decks will make that much more tolerable for us. And our understanding with uh Rick Asman was that that would not ca- count as part of our percentage.
That's correct.
And that's when, that's when we realized we really had to go the route of, in order to make this work, um, to hire an architect and put the put the whole puzzle together. And it's 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 a an arduous task and a very next, very expensive task. But we feel it's worth the investment, because we love Maynard and we love our neighbor neighborhood.
So Bill, could you show the request? Is it simply what you're having there in three B to allow construction of a deck?
Yes, the if we um.
I think I heard five feet somewhere, and that's not just a deck, it's a very special size deck.
The, yes, the um, oh, I think it's in the um application. Uh, but here is um what's being proposed here. Um is an encroachment, the the um despite the let's see, twelve feet, yeah, um twelve point nine feet. So yeah, you the deck, the new deck would be five feet, and we could, we would add the uh the plan with it from the application. Let's see it, I don't know if it's on this one. And um so it'd be consistent with the depiction and the applicant's uh plan, which I'll pull up. And it's a five-foot encroachment.
On their handwritten application, we would like to extend the side deck five feet into the front setback area.
That's correct.
That that's the kinda thing we can rule on, because that's the kinda thing they're specifically asking for. And they have, you have the map there to say where this is?
Right.
And so the general tone of the of the folks here favorable, I think I heard generally favorable.
Yes.
So if somebody make a motion to, I haven't gotten the vote yet, I'm just going for the motion. So if somebody make that motion for me.
Uh, I make a motion to grant the special permit, allowing construction of the deck, uh which would extend um five feet into the existing encroachment of the twenty-five foot front setback uh as it does not exacerbate the current encroachment.
Good, do I get a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Excellent, any further comment? No, but before we take the vote, you said you have some neighbors here, do they wish to speak?
We do have some neighbors, uh Josh and Kelsey are here.
Uh, I I'm Josh, I I spoke up earlier, once again, I don't, I I forgot the procedures, I apologize. But um, no, I I I just wanted to say Lois and Kristy are fantastic neighbors, and I wouldn't, anyone else living next to me, um except for maybe some of the other folks on the call. Um, and um, I I I think anything to make them more comfortable um here would be a benefit to the town as a whole.
So you're in favor of their application?
Without a doubt.
Okay. And the other folks on the call here, Kelsey and?
Yeah, hi, um, I just am here to fully support these ladies, because I too would want nobody else as my neighbors. Um, they are the best, and I look forward to a meal on that new deck.
So you're in favor of it?
One hundred percent.
Thank you.
Kelsey and Joshua, would you like to join boards, any boards or committees?
No, thank you.
All right, now we had that advertisement. When the motion's on the table, so let's let's see what happens with the vote, Paige?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
I'll be a yes as well. So that means we are giving you the special permit, and Bill can fill you in on all the logistical trivia.
I'll be in touch in the next couple of couple of days, but basically, we need roughly figure ten days to get it drafted. Then there's a a a twenty-day appeal period, and you're ready to go right to uh building permits after that.
Thanks so much, Bill and Paul and everybody here on the team, we really appreciate your time and consideration tonight.
All right.
Fine.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think that's the last item on our formal agenda, Bill, isn't it?
That's it.
Or do we have some?
That was our our longest CBA meeting ever, I believe.
So just to make it a minute longer, we have this little task force working in the in the in the wings about figuring out a better zoning map. And Brad's been doing a ton of work on that.
Yes, he has.
And I don't know, is this a a good time, Brad, to give us the the ten-second introduction as to what's happening?
Um, sure, why not? Um, right now, the efforts are to um try to understand um what uh we have in the town of Maynard in terms of um uh what properties are conforming and non-conforming, and what those non-conformities may or may not be um on any given property. So we're starting out with the S one um zoned properties and going through and trying to determine um how many um properties are non-conforming, have at least one non-conforming. And as it turns out, it looks like ninety percent of the properties uh have at least one non-conformity. Um, maybe maybe more than ninety percent, it's 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 quite a few. So um, so the idea is what we're trying to do is identify what the non-conformities are, and then be able to um put them into the GIS system. And that way, uh the GIS system um would be able to um uh you could manipulate it potentially to say, uh for instance, if a lot of the properties are failing because of the hundred-foot frontage in the S one, they're missing that. Um, you could go through with the GIS system and set your criteria at, say, eighty feet. And it would suddenly change the map, and it would show how few, you know, how how many properties now are conforming that were not conforming before. And you can go through each of the various criterias um for what the S one zoning is. Um, the only thing that we don't have a really very good ability to do is to do the setbacks, side setbacks, front setbacks, um rear setbacks. Um, those, most of that information are on plot plans. Um, the GIS will help a little bit um to give you an estimate. Um, but at that point, you're sort of going to look at um neighborhoods. For instance, you can go down any given street, and you could see that all of the houses on a particular street may have a bad or have a, you know, a rear setback which is inadequate to meet the zoning law. So that, those are the all the things that we um are gonna try to um get into um the a spreadsheet, um and eventually, you know, make it um a visualize, a visual aid to look at what we have here in the town using the uh GIS system.
So when you say using the GIS, are you putting numbers into the GIS?
Um, apparently, that's what um Zoe said that we can do. Um, she she needs it in a special format, she needs to have the parcel number, which is how the what the GIS references off of. And then we can add to the GIS um numbers like the frontage, uh the percentage of coverage of a um with of the building coverage and things like that, which is information that we get off of the assessor cards.
Okay, so it's it's not data that you're generating, it's data you're copying from somewhere.
That that's basically what it is, is putting it in, uh putting it into a, um, I am uh calculating the percentage of coverage based on the lot size and the building, the building sizes, because that's um, that's not written down anywhere. So basically, the um all that information is on the property cards in terms of all the buildings in the building.
So I just wanted to share that what he's doing with the rest of you guys. There's no action needed tonight, it's just to let you know that we're trying to figure out, is there a better set of the numeric criteria for the different zoning residential districts? We don't know, we don't know if there's a better criteria, but we'll find out.
It'll be, it it's, what they're working on, it's incre- it's incredible, and and if if we can come up with something there, it'll be revolutionary.
Maybe, but at least we know what we have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How many parcels? You told me that, I don't know how many.
Um, let's see, there's a, there's single-family homes, there's over twenty-six hundred. Um, there's about six, over six hundred condos, there's um um, I think there's a couple hundred um two families, and about eighty or less, three families. And those are in um spread out over all all of the town, so that's all three of the districts of uh S one, S two, and general residential.
Even though some of those might not be a legitimate, it might be pre-existing, non-conforming, two families or three.
Oh, yeah, a lot lots of them are, um, uh, one of the things they're doing is is putting um, putting the dates built uh with them, that when uh houses were built onto the database as well, and that's also on the assessor's cards. So it's another column that you could look at. But yeah, a lot of the stuff is yeah, uh, it's it's not hard to make make it, um, I mean, some of these properties are um become non-conforming, uh just with one non-conformity, which is a lot of it is the um coverage. And sometimes it's just one shed over. You know?
But it it's useful information, as I say, we don't have answers yet. Uh, Brad's been doing a lot of work here, and again, I just wanted to let you guys know that this is happening. I don't know when he'll be ready to make a presentation, my guess is quite a while from now. Maybe what, early next year? No, I'm I'm just taking a guess.
Well, yeah, I mean, but we're we're starting with the S ones. And um, I mean, in another month or so, we should probably have most of the information about the S one uh non-conforming, you know, lots, now we can move on to the next ones. But I mean, that that gives us something to start with.
Yeah.
And and we can figure out what what to do with it.
All right, so that that's all I wanted to to get out. Uh, Bill, is there anything else we should share?
No, I'll be in touch with you individually as as soon as we get some more uh developments on our uh forty B. Uh, I've got done a lot of things, I'll touch base with you individually, that's what I'll do.
Are we going to be able to have a site visit?
I don't know, I'll check that out, would you, would that something you'd like, if I could arrange them?
Oh, definitely.
Does anybody else interested?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I I think once we get the applica- I I don't think we can do it until we get the application, but I'll double-check on that, and I'll let you know tomorrow.
Can we just drive down the driveway?
Huh?
Can't we just drive down the driveway?
It's private property, I wouldn't wanna do it without permission.
Oh, okay.
I I, we had, we had a site visit yes uh last week for um with the developer and uh Mass Housing Partnership. Um let me see what I can do, I I I gotta find out how to, how I can do it. I I imagine you would want to come out before the uh uh petition, I'll I'll find that out, but I I'll I'll put that on the uh agenda for tomorrow and get an answer. And I might actually bring them out there individually, which I'm happy to do, you know, I don't know.
Okay, so I I don't know if I've made all the necessary requests for motions about closing different meetings and hearings and so on and so forth, but there is one I would like to request at this point.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor? You you guys did great today, I'm I'm sorry it took so long, but we had some healthy discussion, and that was the important stuff.
Thank you, everybody, I.
It was a good meeting.
And I'd like to invite everybody to the planning board tomorrow night, I got a barn burner, feel free to join.
You do?
Help me out.
Is it in person or another virtual?
We're both, we're hybrid.
Oh, so we show up at town hall, cause I don't know how to get on it otherwise.
It's same as us, same as us here, there's nothing, it's not, it's not my, we have a continuum, so we just have, we're finishing up the elementary school. So, and, um, Jerry's, Jerry's been plugged into that one.
Yeah, I'll see you tomorrow night.
Okay. Oh, are you coming?
I think I am, yeah.
Oh, good, okay. All right, one, uh, one friendly face in the audience.
I'll, I'll try to be friendly.
Yeah, the scary thing is, I remember when the current elementary school was built.
He got.
Well, you, you must be old.
I must be terribly old, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I made, I made the Boston Globe on that because we had so many people voting, we had to do it in the, in the field, the, the football soccer field area.
Wow.
And it rained like crazy, and we're just standing there underneath an umbrella, and some reporter from the Boston Globe took a picture of my wife and me, and there we are, voting on the thing in the rain.
On the original Green Meadow?
On the Green Meadow that's there now.
On a portion of it. Part of it was built in the 50s.
No, 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 not, not that old stuff, but the new Green Meadow where the kids are now. Maybe it's, maybe we're talking to middle school.
Middle school, follow middle.
Middle school.
Follow the middle school, it was built in 99.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, occupied, 99, yep. Oh, well, come tomorrow night, you'll, you'll hear us talk about trees.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah.
Goodbye.
Bye-bye.